Let the record reflect, we have reconvened with all members present. Councilmember Pat Rowe is absent, excused. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing after the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. In a few moments, we will be recognizing and remembering Ben Wolkowitz with comments, and we'll have a moment of silence for Ben, but right now, I want to also have a moment of silence for Pat DiBiase Jr., a lifelong Madison resident who died on August 3rd at the age of 83. As noted in his obituary, Pat was raised in Madison and finally recalled the details around Rose City of his youth. Pat assisted his late father in maintaining and repairing the boilers in the Rose greenhouses, and through that, he became a master plumber and established his own plumbing company, Pat DiBiase and Associates. Pat invested in Madison real estate, which is always a good investment, and Morris County. He took great pride in his properties and rehabilitated many buildings that he purchased. On Valentine's Day in 1960, he married the love of his life Carmela Gomez-Dibiasi, and they settled in Madison where they raised their family. Carmela and Pat worked together, side by side, managing their real estate investment company. Pat was proud to be one of the original founders of the Madison Eagle Christmas Fund with his wife Carmela and many others. Pat took an interest and active role in local affairs and politics, serving as a president of the Republican Committee in the 70s. In addition to his parents, Pat was predeceased by his wife Carmela DiBiase, survived by two sons, Pat III and Gary, and one daughter Dawn Neville, and two sisters, four cherished and four cherished grandchildren. Let's take a moment of silence to recognize the life of Pat and have our thoughts and prayers with his family. As I mentioned, we're going to take some time for our council members and others to share their thoughts and memories of Ben Wolkowitz. As you know, Ben passed away Thursday, August 1st, after losing his battle with cancer. He served two, three-year terms, and there, a great smile on the board there. And as he said in March 2018, very difficult decision not to run for reelection that year. Over the course of the past year, Ben had disclosed that he had been undergoing treatment for lymphoma and pancreatic cancer. Ben had a life full of accomplishments, and his six years of success on this council, as he served two terms, was truly a great part of his success. He led the borough's strategic planning efforts, restored Madison's AAA bond rating. And when, you know, related to this strategic planning, when I made that a goal in my first term, I knew right away who to turn to, and that was Ben Wolkowitz. In a short, short time, he had earned the title "Father of Strategic Planning." If there was something to look to the future, Ben Wolkowitz was ready to plan for it. His leadership gave a clear direction on long-range planning for financial planning, capital improvement needs and funding communications. These are all roadmaps we will be using for many years to come. He helped those in need by introducing the Electric Utility Rebate Program, and then later spearheaded the electric dividends. All ratepayers benefited from the success of our utility. You know, while he cited his health when he decided not to seek a third term, he still wanted to volunteer to serve our community that he loved so much. This year, he was working on the committee reviewing levels of surplus and leading the effort reviewing our committees and boards. His last email showed the level of dedication that Ben put into everything he did. It also showed a trait that he had, which was to be always direct and to the point. As he wrote in the email, "Bob, I was in New York on Monday reviewing test results which support the conclusion that my disease has become fatal. It is now taking too much time and energy for me to complete the project. Not where I want to leave it, but I have no choice." That's Ben, thinking about this community as he's dealing with a tough part of his life, dedicated to the very end. As I stated last week, Ben always was working to find ways to make Madison a better place to live and work, even after his term on council ended, as I just mentioned. His smile and intellect would light up a room, just as that picture is doing right And we will certainly miss that smile. I once heard Ben say one of his least favorite jobs over his life was that of a professor. You know, I found that very interesting because I often thought that I would sign up for any course that Ben Wolkowitz would teach. His knowledge and expertise that he shared in these chambers and on various committees was incredible. The way he imparted his knowledge had me taking notes and listening intently on every word. I was going to be ready for the final exam. Yes, Ben was truly a mentor and, more importantly, a good friend. I will miss Ben. Asher, you.
Ben and Lois Wolkowitz have been my very good friends for many years. We shared many volunteer activities together, as well as a deep friendship. In 2012, the Democratic Party was looking for a candidate. I knew Ben had retired from his professional career and that he was an active volunteer at his temple, at Rotary, and the Great Swamp Watershed Association. I also knew he would be a great candidate and a great council member, so I called him up and asked him to be my running mate. Well, for those of you who knew Ben, just picture him when he got the call and said, "Who, me? I'll be right over." One of his major concerns was that he had not been actively involved in the Madison community. I told him, "Don't worry, we'll be knocking on every door in Madison." Of course, his eyebrows shot up, and he looked at me like I was nuts, but Ben jumped in with both feet, literally. We did walk every street in Madison and knocked on as many doors as we could. Ben committed to knowing the issues, the community, and the politics of getting elected. Ben was a hard worker, and he was also very competitive. He was determined to win, and he was elected twice with large majorities. And then once on council, he did a job incredibly well. He studied hard and made sure he fully understood the issues. The mayor has mentioned his accomplishments, so I won't repeat them. And again, after he retired from council, he agreed to be chair of the committee on committees. So Ben's contributions have made a very positive and long-lasting difference for residents. One of Ben's greatest strengths was his ability to explain at council meetings why the actions he supported were good for Madison. He was a humble man who quietly and expertly explained in very plain language for all to understand why Madison would benefit from these programs and actions. He really enjoyed meeting and working with residents of our town. Approximately three weeks ago, Ben found out that his cancer was spreading, and I got the opportunity to have one more conversation with my friend Ben. I did not know it would be our last. Ben said he had been so touched by the people from Madison he met and worked with over the years. He said it truly made a positive difference in his life. But I want to say thank you to Ben. He was so generous with his time and his commitment to helping to make Madison a desirable place to live. He was humble, he was kind, he's really smart, and we're going to miss him greatly. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I think you're going to hear the same words come out of your mouths, but I'm going to reiterate them anyway. A few years ago, a few years back, Asher called me to say that she was going to run for reelection, and I thought, "Oh, thank God." And I have a great running mate, and his name is Ben Wolkowitz. I didn't know Ben that well at the time, but I decided I was going to help on their campaign, and I spent a lot of time walking and knocking on doors, and I just became a fan. It was easy. You know, we did a lot of walking in the 6th District and the 14th District, which he was enamored by it, you know, how people would hand him a jar of tomatoes or whatever, or a couple of tomatoes to bring home and whatever. And he had never seen any of that, so it was the real people of Madison that he felt that he was getting to know. And I feel lucky that I walked with him, and I got to really know this really wonderful guy. We were lucky to get him elected then. And then whenever we sat at the council table, I was impressed by his wonderful personality. He was very, very smart, and he was unbiased and humble as anybody could be. Those are wonderful traits. Very often, that same smile, you know, we'd be into confrontations, well, not confrontation, a lot of discussion, and I would look up, and Ben would give me that smile, and I'd say, "Ah, everything's okay." We'd have a good conversation later on. Got to know Ben over the last couple of years, and we talked to each other a lot about having cancer and how you dealt with it. And he listened very patiently, and I said to him, "Just keep fighting, you know, get yourself aggravated," use the expression, "get pissed," I said, "because you'll get better." And he did. Lymphoma was arrested, but the rest of his body just broke down. Ben always thought that he was very lucky to meet all the people in Madison that he never got the opportunity to meet, but I think we were lucky. I think we were lucky to have him beside us, to make sure that we understood the problems that were before us, and he used his logic, you know, to solve it. I would tell him very often after he gave his reports, "Ben, I could listen to your reports forever, you know, you're not boring, and I understand every single word you say." And that was quite a thing with him. Past couple of years have been difficult for him and Lois and their family, but Ben met all of that challenge with a lot of grace and gratitude for the time that he had. Like the mayor said, up to a couple of months ago, he decided he'd sit on the surplus committee meeting, the committee for committees, and he just kept on striving. I mean, it wouldn't be unusual to send him an email and to discuss some of this, and he just kept on striving to keep on helping us. So I think right now, what I want to say besides missing Ben, he was the best thing that happened to us in a very, very long time, so. I think what I want to say is, I want to thank the residents of Madison who accepted Ben and made him a part of our team. You all helped him get elected, and he became our friend, mentor, and a lot to all of us. So he's going to be missed. We think about him every day. Thank you.
Thank you.
So Ben Wolkowitz may have only been about 5'7", but he was a giant of a man. His intellect was amazing, and his ability to break it down into the elements so that anyone could understand and be able to communicate it to others was astounding. His smile was always plastered on his face, and he always wanted to know how you were doing. Did you understand what we were talking about? As many of you know, I've had some health issues over the last year and a half, and Ben would call me out of the blue to find out how I was doing. He was battling his own cancer scare, his own cancer battle, and then he found the time to call me. I was so lucky to have been mentored by Ben Wolkowitz. I am a much better person for having known and having had as a role model Ben Wolkowitz.
It's very difficult to follow up what everybody just said, but let me try and share some thoughts in my own words, okay? Ben and I worked at the Federal Reserve Board in Washington DC at the same time, but in different departments. We worked together at the Rotary and did many projects together, and Ben was always a leader, a colleague, and a teammate. He was just terrific. One of the skills I admire about Ben is that he researched something that he cared about thoroughly, totally researched it. He had the capability of pulling it all together and synthesizing it, and then sharing it with people so that they could understand what he was saying. In my mind, the thing I admired most about Ben, besides him being a friend and a colleague, was that he was a teacher, as you mentioned before, Bob. He was a great teacher and a great sharer of information. He loved everything that we do, he loved the council, the members of the council, no matter which side of the party they were on. He argued intelligently and skillfully and softly. He was, Ben was just a great guy, and personally, I'm going to miss him like crazy. So thank you.
I never had the privilege to work with Ben on the council, but his legacy of public service, showing commitment to the community and the town he loved, is one we should all be grateful for. Ben and I met several times throughout my campaign, and he was always willing to share his knowledge of Madison, as well as his experiences on the council. His ability to make the daunting become understandable was an indispensable aid to me as I prepared to serve the town. Ben and I served on a committee together after my election, and again, his knowledge of both the town as well as the council was invaluable. I have and will continue to look to his example as I serve Madison. Ben will be missed.
Thank you. Ray?
As some people journey through life, they leave footprints wherever they go. Footprints of kindness and love, courage and compassion, humor and inspiration, intelligence and wisdom. Even when they're gone, we can still look back and clearly see the trail they left behind, a trail bright with hope that invites us to follow. Ben was just that type of person. He blazed a trail of humility, civility, creativity, and kindness for us to follow. My wife and I spoke to Ben at length two days before he died. He was at peace in Martha's Vineyard and comforted by the love of his family and the friends from afar in Madison. We feel devastated about the loss of this wonderful man, but I'm comforted by the words of one of my favorite poets, Henry Van Dyke, in his poem entitled "I Am Standing Upon the Seashore," which kind of goes, and I've used this at my father's funeral. "I'm standing upon the seashore, a ship at my side spreads his white sails to the morning breeze and starts for the blue ocean. He's an object of beauty and strength. I stand and watch him until at length he hangs like a speck of white cloud just where the sea and the sky come to mingle with each other. Then someone at my side says, 'There, he's gone.'" Gone where? "He's gone from my sight, that's all. He's just as large and massed in hull and spar as he was when he left our side, and he's just as able to bear his load of living freight to his destined port. His diminished size is in us, not in him. And just at the moment when someone at my side says, 'There, he's gone,' there are other eyes watching him coming, and other voices ready to take up the glad shout, 'Here he comes.'" And I'm sure I'll be discussing strategic planning with Ben at some point in the future, and he'll be smiling just like he is on that photo. Thank you.
Just as we look at this photo, one of the things I would highly recommend everyone do is to pull up the video of our reorganization meeting when Ben had his farewell where that picture was taken, and, you know, I think it was, he was so appreciative of his time here. So please rise. And Carmela said it very well, you know, this is for someone who is so lucky to have in our lives and so lucky to have served the borough of Madison. So a moment of silence for our friend, mentor, leader, Ben Wolkowitz, and thoughts for his Thank you for the setup that included boxes of Kleenex at the tables. All right, may I have a motion for the minutes of executive session, July 22nd, 2019?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
And a motion for the regular minutes of July 22nd, 2019?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Welcome all. See, a challenge to transition, but Ben would want us to power forward, so a couple of things. In one, we had a power outage with the storms last week, which was caused by when JCP&amp;L lost both feeder lines that came into Madison. One was restored fairly quickly, the second one took a little bit longer. And I want to thank the great response from Madison Electric for being ready and having us back up so quickly. It was minutes for part of the town and less than an hour for the rest of town. We are going to have continued conversations with JCP&amp;L. If you recall, a few months ago, we also had a townwide outage, and the same problem happened during Sandy and during the Halloween snowstorm. And our issue with JCP&amp;L is when the line goes down, their board indicates that they've lost one customer. And obviously, Madison represents 5,000 customers, 16,000 residents, and my conversation after the spring outage was they said, "We can't change the board just saying one customer, but we will promise that we will make sure that there's an alert on Madison's feeder line that we know when it goes down." It appears that that did not happen, and so this is why we are meeting on Friday, wanting to find out why the feeder lines went down, while it was, may have been somewhat storm-related for the indications from our crew, it was not lightning-related, and the winds were not that strong, so we'll get a full explanation, and we'll find out why their leadership there cannot put the priority on the feeder lines into Madison. And just shifting on another note, the employees for the month of August, Fred Rivera and Michael Morano, Department of Public Works, for their dedication and commitment going above and beyond in maintaining the playing fields for Madison Little League. I did last month share a letter from the Little League complimenting our crew for doing such a great job this season, so they're in play the months. If you see them around, probably working on the fields, please thank them. And on a personal note, I just want everyone to know that today is middle child day. So as the middle child of 11, it's my day.
You didn't make it up, huh? It's real.
Okay. Public safety?
Thank you.
Asher?
Thank you, Mayor. I will also do utilities, too.
Thank you.
Get it over with. All right. First, Morris County recently launched their new emergency alert system called Alert Morris, which provides notices for Morris County as well as most of the 39 municipalities, including Madison. Within the borough of Madison, it will be referred to as Alert Madison. With Alert Madison, residents will continue to receive the same emergency alerts and mass notifications via email, text, or phone as they currently do. So as of November 1st, 2019, Alert Madison will be replacing NICSIL for borough-wide notifications. The Madison Police Department, along with Morris County, is advising residents to re-register with Alert Madison to ensure that they are properly enrolled in the new system. Residents can sign up for Alert Madison for free by visiting www-alertmadison.org. And I just did it with a little help from my friends here, and it only takes about five minutes. In addition to Alert Madison, residents registration automatically signs them up for Smart 911, which provides all residents of the family with potentially life-saving Smart 911, an important and free emergency 911 call component for those jurisdictions, including Morris County, whose 911 center utilizes this product. With Smart 911, residents' information is secure and only accessible to a 911 call-taker. This service provides residents key information to first responders, including but not limited to their address, family details, medical information, animals, emergency contacts, and vehicles, all of which are critical in a time of emergency. So if you have questions about Alert Madison, you can email alertmadison@rosenet.org, or you can call 973-408-8789. And we'll keep repeating this so we get it through, and there'll be a notice coming from the borough directly to each homeowner. From the Police Department, on Tuesday, August 6th, the Madison Police Department reinstated their participation in National Night Out in order to foster enhanced relationships between neighbors and our department while reinforcing a true sense of community. This event provided a great opportunity to bring the police and the citizens together under positive circumstances that build a foundation that will aid in crime prevention. Chief Datchison would like to thank our citizens and community stakeholders who participated in the event, as well as the mayor and council members who attended. He would also like to thank Chief Lou DeRosa of Madison Fire Department for his participation and that of his firefighters. From the Electric Department, the new Butler Building exterior is complete, and the department is waiting for the installation of lights, racks, and electric service. The Electric Department, with the assistance of the Water Department, repaired the sump pump in the James Park substation basement. That's extremely important. The electric line clearance tree trimming crew is currently working on the Park Avenue and Danforth roadside of town, trimming the trees. Tuesday, August 6th, at 5:00 PM, a cutout box went up in flames. The standby crew was called. The power was shut down for approximately 30 minutes while the crew replaced the damaged box. Wednesday, August 7th, at 2:45 PM, a lightning strike took out the power at the Madison Mall Apartments and the adjacent shopping center. Our Electric Department restored the power in 20 minutes. On Wednesday, August 7th, at 3:45 PM, the Electric Apartments standby crew was called out to cut down a tree on Green Avenue that had broken during the storm. Thursday, August 8th, at 7:45 PM, the borough lost power at both substations due to a severe thunderstorm. The Kings Road Substation went back online quickly, but the James Park Substation did not. Both of the breakers that feed the James Park Substation had tripped. Normally, only one line tripped, which allows the other line to feed our substation and maintain power for the surrounding community. And the standby crew was called out to do some switching in the substation yard and reset both breakers that feed the James Park Sub. Power was completely restored by 8:45 PM. From the Water Department, they conducted a leak survey by using an electronic listening device, and they found two significant leaks in the Rosedale Spring Garden area. One leak was excavated and repaired. The other leak was caused by a fire hydrant that had been used unlawfully, and the fire hydrant needed to be operated correctly and shut down. And the department would also like to remind everyone, voluntarily water their lawns during non-sunlight hours only. Use odd and even days. Try to limit the watering to twice a week. Please remember, it is our drinking water that is being used to keep your grass green. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Finance and Borough Clerk, Ms. Vitale.
Thank you, Mayor. Before I do my report, I just want to make a few remarks about National Night Out. I went along with Mayor, Deb, and you guys, right?
I was at a planning board meeting.
Never gets my name right, ever.
Anyway, I wanted, I just wanted to say something. We went from one group of houses to the other. The cops were like unbelievable. I mean, up in Morris Place, they were playing football with the kids, and the fire department was giving out ice pops. It was an extraordinary...
Goodwill.
Good feeling to see what community policing actually was, and that's exactly what they were doing. It was community policing. They were into, they just went and they talked to all the parents and whatever. There was no shyness or whatever, so we have a good bunch of brand-new police that are extraordinary. I just want to say that, so it's, you know, congratulations to Darren for a good job done. So from the Finance Department, the borough is a member of the Madison-Morris Joint Insurance Fund, and there's a resolution on the agenda for this evening where council will vote to renew the membership in the fund for another three years until 2023. The JIF has served the borough well over the years. They do a great job helping us proact-
They do a great job helping us proactively, looking for ways to reduce accidents with training, inspections, and education. In fact, we just got a safety bulletin, a couple of issues, today on school crossing, guard safety, and training. The JIF offers great training for all of our employees to help them, to keep them and everyone else safe. The Finance Department is in charge of the borough's insurance coverage, and over the next month, the staff will be reviewing the schedules of assets, equipment, and property to make sure we are adequately covered. When the tax collector, the third-quarter tax bills went out a month ago. In order to avoid penalties, property owners had to make their payments today by 4:30 p.m. All payments received after that time will be subject to state mandated interest. So please call or visit the tax collector if you have any questions or problems. It's hard to believe that 2020 budget process is now underway. The first step of the process is for the department heads to review their operating and capital budgets and then meet with administration. That review process has started and will take about six weeks to complete. As in the past, the budget discussions will start in December and go until April. Residents interested in learning more should visit the annual budget process page on Rosenet. Pilot payments. Last week, the chief financial officer paid the Board of Education their quarterly pilot payment for revenue from the Rose Hall development at the former Green Village Road School. Madison is unique in that municipal governing body voluntarily agreed to share 32.5% of the pilot payments with the school board. This year, the schools are expected to get over $170,000 in additional revenue from the pilot.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And Public Works and Engineering, Ms. Byrne.
So Carmella said that everyone had a good time on Tuesday night. I don't think, I think that the fire and police were more reluctant to leave than the 30-year-olds who had to go to bed. So from GPW, excuse me, from the Engineering Department, the final road improvements are being made with striping and signage work in progress. A pre-construction meeting for Grove Street water main replacement with Jim Attina and utility contractors is slated for Tuesday, August 13. That's tomorrow. The sewer mainlining projects for Beach, Rose, Cedar, Pine, Park, West Center, and Elm is scheduled for Thursday, August 15. The electric storage building is substantially completed and backed on today's consent agenda as a piece of equipment for that storage thing. And then DPW is going out to bid for a recycling center bid, and that is, has a bid opening date of September 4. DPW continues to do the maintenance of the police, fire, and DPW equipment, keeping all of our vehicles and lawn mowers and various things up and moving. They also take care of watering the baskets in downtown and trees so that we don't lose the amount of money that we put into those improvements. They also do upcake on rec fields as specified by the Recreation Department, and I think that's a really good synergy that's going on because we've been able to see a real improvement on the rec fields after rain. And we've all experienced a lot of rain lately. Couple of years ago, if we had had the rain we have by now, those fields would be unplayable for three or four days. Well, the Rec Department has been taking steps to make sure that maybe not the next day, but two days later, those fields are playable, which is an enormous improvement. And then tonight, we have a presentation by our own Claire Whitacombe of the Environmental Commission on a proposed single-use plastics regulations. And of course, we all know with waste streams that we're all going to have to start addressing this, and this is just a single drop, but it's a first step. And yeah, that's it.
Thank you. Community Affairs, Mr. Hoover.
Thank you, Mayor. From the Senior Center, the Garden Club and the Shea Tree provided a list of experts who will be interested in landscaping project in the early spring. Currently, there is a couple in town who have helped to improve grounds by planting their own homegrown flowers in several areas around the property. They come like every week to maintain them and plant new plants. It's just great. Treetown 55-plus Coalition, the Borough of Madison, this is important. The Borough of Madison has been designated as an age-friendly community by AARP and the World Health Organization. We are one of 390 such communities in the whole country. Wow. Received such a designation. It's really good. They're going to make a formal presentation sometime in September, hopefully. From the Senior Citizens Advisory Committee, there's no real report this month. From the Director of Business Development Downtown Development Commission, there's no DDC report and no report from the Community Arts Center. Chamber of Commerce, the monthly networking breakfast on Tuesday, April 13, and the following, and the focus meeting on Wednesday, August 21, are canceled. Must be vacation season. Sidewalk sales days will run Thursday, August 22 through Saturday, August 24. Tables are permitted outside on the sidewalks. The Drew Downtown Tour is scheduled for Saturday, September 24, August, excuse me, August 24. The Chamber's happy hour is Wednesday, August 28, at the Shanghai Jazz. Please come over. Restaurant Week is being planned for Sun Saturday, October 5 through Sunday, October 11, in partnership with the Downtown Development Commission. The Museum of Early Trades and Crafts, M E T C, the museum is starting on the next phase of conservation of the historic James Building funded by the MCHPT and the Madison Open Space Recreation Historic Prevention Fund. A thermal scan will be conducted on Monday under the guidance of historic building architects. This is a planning phase to determine how best to preserve the interior finishes. All the work on the exterior of the building has been completed. The museum will be hosting its annual benefit on September 27 at the Park Avenue Club. Invitations will be forthcoming. The Recreation Advisory Committee, the committee has issued its user fee analysis and recommendations, and it was voted on by the membership. Hopefully, it will be presented to the council sometime in September. Mayor's Wellness, a fitness crawl is in preliminary planning and is scheduled for September 15, from 9:15 to 12:30, followed by a reception at the Madison Community Arts Center. More information will be forthcoming on Rosenet. Thank you.
Thank you. And Health, Ms. Cohen.
Nice and short this month. The Health Department has scheduled a comprehensive blood test screening for Wednesday, September 25. The screening includes complete blood count, glucose, lipid panel, and blood pressure check. The screening is free of charge and open to residents of Madison, Chatham Township, Cranford, and Springfield. Appointments are required. Please call 973-593-3079, extension 1 to schedule. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. One quick follow-up. As you know, at the last council meeting, I presented our approach over the coming months related to pedestrian safety and distracted driving, an issue that is near and dear to our council and dedicated, our staff is going to be dedicated to making this the safest town possible. One of the things that has been shown many times is that most drivers intend to do the right thing and sometimes need a little reminder of where they are. That includes the, you know, the speed limit signs that you'll see on Rosedale that flashes, and all of a sudden, you slow down as soon as you see that. The bumpouts in roads that you notice. And the other thing is the crosswalk signs. Jim Burnett is standing by there. So I asked him to look into, see if we can put more into our budget and, yes, and if we can buy about 20 of these. And the idea here is we will move them around the town because one of the things is if it stays in one place, you get used to it. And so by having these move around by crosswalks, it will be very helpful. And the other thing that will, as I mentioned in the last meeting, is the working with transoptions to educate people with crosswalks. One of the big misconceptions is a crosswalk is defined by the lines in the road. The reality is a crosswalk is defined by a corner. Wherever there's an intersection is a defined crosswalk. And it's one of the things where we need to remind the drivers that all intersections, marked or not, are crosswalks, and remind pedestrians that that is the safest place to be crossing. So this will help get that word out there. So Jim said we can afford to, right now, to purchase 20 of these, and so the administration will work with the Police Department to get these and start moving around.
If you don't mind, I think this is a great idea. I really do, Jim and Mayor. Thank you very much. It reminds me, though, of the no-left-hand-turn-a-chipotle. And I'd certainly like to see something put up, put up something like this, put up in the center yellow line that prevents people from turning left. Because there's five signs there now, and nobody but nobody obeys them. And that's really dangerous. You talk to Deb Stocker over at the museum, and she says, "I hear bumps every day of the cars getting hit." So something like this, I think, should be put at that left-hand, no-left-hand-turn-a-chipotle.
We are, we are working, as a state highway, we have an extra layer of bureaucracy, but we've reached out, and we'll try to make that, we'll reemphasize that. It is an issue. Blind corners you come around. All right. Any communications or petitions?
Yes, Mayor. Mayor and council received more than 25 comments on our website regarding the quick response to last Friday's power outage by our utility department caused by the JCPenel feeder lines going down. And also, a letter dated August 5 from the Madison Historical Society regarding a proposed meeting.
Thank you. And now we're on to our first of two discussions from the public. This one is limited to our agenda item and all the resolutions. I will go through the resolutions in a second so you know what's on the consent agenda and also what you can comment on. There'll be a later comment period when you can comment on any topic. So our agenda discussion, as mentioned, is the proposed ordinance related to single-use plastics, and that will be, we'll get the groundwork for that. And the resolutions that are on the consent agenda, Resolution 237, appointing Lady Les Collado to the position Deputy Court Administrator, $55,000. That's to backfill the position of the former deputy has moved up to administrator. Resolution 238 has been pulled. We'll come back at a later date, and that was related to the Senior Center general policies and standards. Resolution 239, authorizing membership in the H-GAC National Purchasing Cooperative, which will be primarily used by the Fire Department. Resolution 240, to renew our membership in the Morris County Joint Insurance Fund has been just noted also in reports. 241, approving contract to Tilcon for paving improvements under the Morris County Cooperative not to exceed $200,000. This is funded through Ordinance 39-2019. Resolution 242 proclaiming Saturday, October 5 as Bottle Hill Day and authorizing the Beer Garden. 243 is granting Turn the Towns Teal Permission to tie ribbons around trees on the streets of Madison from September 1 through the 30th in support of their Turn the Town Teals campaign to fight ovarian cancer. 244, Resolution appointing Isaac Montijo to position a part-time senior van driver, and this is on the salary at $15.91 an hour. Resolution 245, approving the insertion of item of revenue and budget in the year 2019. This is $2,000 Morris County Alliance Against Alcoholism and Drug Abuse supplemental grant, and this will allow MASA to spend that money this year, and that's an amount of $2,000. Resolution 246, approving temporary signs for Restaurant Week, as also is mentioned in the report. October 6 through 11, the signs will be up from the 25th through October 12. Resolution 247, recognizing the borough's emergency management plan response for extreme temperatures. Resolution 248, supporting a community vision of a green Madison. Resolution 249, supporting the Madison Survival Movement Commission Echo House and Garden Tour. Resolution 250 is ratifying salary increase for certain utility billing and finance department employees. This is recognizing a change in their roles and increase their responsibilities, and it's a $4,000 increase to the four employees. Resolution 251, appointing Renee Resi of Madison to position police matron in the Police Department and salary guided by the Borough Ordinance for part-time police matrons. Resolution 252, authorizing mobile parking payment enforcement system to Box Car, Inc. And this is, this will be, in fact, to help manage our commuter parking and other things. So those are the resolutions. You may comment on any of those or our one agenda item. If you wish to comment on those, please step forward. State your name, your address, write the same on the clipboard, and state the topic you are talking on, since this one is the limited one. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting, and we are now on to our single-use plastics. Claire.
Well, okay, here we go. I'm going to tell you, first of all, that part of this presentation is, when I spoke to Anjek, I said that I was going to talk about all the ideas that we stole from other towns, and Bob said that we had recycled them. So this is actually a recycled presentation. It began with Chatham Borough, and Len Resto gave it, and I sat with him as, like, in case he needed anything. And then Jessica Romeo gave it at Chatham Township, and Julie was there, and she's from Chatham Township. This is our final dog and pony show, and it's a Chatham Borough council meeting, so Joslyn Matheson couldn't come here. Jessica Romeo had childcare issues. Len Resto's in the Adirondacks. So it's just me officially, but, okay, so what happened? Let me see, where were? Okay. I'm just going to give you a little background, but Jessica reached out to me and said, "We need to tackle plastic." And Chiram Burton was on it. I reached out to the mayor, and he said, he talked to Mayor Harris, and he said, "Okay, let's explore this." So we started meeting way back in December. Then Joan was at the meetings, Maureen was at the meetings, Julie was at the meetings, Alan Cranefist from Madison, and then a whole lot of people. And then other towns started showing up. It just started happening. It became a thing.
Organic.
Organic. It became organic. We were, and we were hashing out all kinds of ideas on how to tackle this. And so we have created, we actually had to, then we had the Anjek meeting, which some of you went to. But we created a model ordinance based on our group. We hash out every detail of it collectively. And I want to call out Marilyn here because she started working on plastics four years ago, and her feedback, which I didn't really know till just now when I was talking to her, was that the rap that she got was, "We can't do this alone. People will go shop at other towns. They're, we're going to, you can't just take this on alone." So between the Chatham's and Madison, we have the major supermarkets, we have the major drugstores. We have a synergy in what we're asking. We have thought about, like, every line of this whole thing. We've reviewed it with Anjek, and so now I'm going to stop talking. You know the problem? Plastic waste goes from, you know, with all these range, it goes out into the ocean. It's having an increased impact. Micro particles are in, and the headwaters of the Raritan River, it's not a good situation. We're drinking plastic. It's in all the newspapers. So this is basically the history. And then we had a regional meeting hosted in Madison. And there were a lot of mayors there. There were 100 people. Every seat was filled at the community house. It was just stunning. Kathy Daly was there. Pat Rowe was there. Bob led a breakout group among mayors to just talk about, like, what we can do, how we can take collective action. And the lowdown, oh, there's a slide on it later about the state, but the lowdown on the state is that the legislation is just deeply stalled. And the advice from our legislators was, "You've got to do it town by town, and you have to build enough ground swell to get this going and trending." So from that meeting, we learned a few ordinance basics, and the. And the ordinance that we are suggesting has a ban on plastic bags, a 10-cent fee on paper bags, and the retailer collects the fee. Towns are not allowed to collect the fee, for one, but for two, it compensates the retailer. And a reusable bag is strictly defined, so that, a lot of the problems that early adopters had was that the reusable bag definition wasn't strong enough, so they could just make something that kind of really just got around it that wasn't especially environmentally better. The goal is not to shift people to paper bags, the goal is to eliminate single-use bags at checkout. There's a lot of exemptions for the things that you need a plastic bag for in our society, though it's crazy. Peter and I were talking about fish, you know, vegetables in the produce aisle, your newspaper, your dry cleaner. So there will be education that needs to happen. There's a six-month lead time for enactment, March 1st is the date we all agreed on. And why is this necessary? I'm not going to, you have this slide, but basically recycling isn't really working. Only a small percentage of these bags get recycled, they're really a pollution factor. There's arguments that plastic could be better than paper, yada, 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 but it's plastic that's in our ecosystem and in the bushes of our town. So yes, you recognize some of these kids, they came here about Skip the Straw, they went door-to-door with 40-plus restaurants, and there's a voluntary shift underway, and we had talked with Lisa Ellis and Karen from the Chamber about maybe Making Restaurant Week have a Skip the Straw kickoff, but that was one conversation, and I don't know, Skip the Straw. The Green Village, this girl in the middle, Amelia, talked to you, she's a fifth grader who's a powerhouse. The other girl there, Luna, talked about food waste, but plastic bags were all over the kids at the Green Vision Forum. I mean, they were on this issue big time. Bridget Daly reached out to Stop &amp; Shop and got us a plastic, a reusable bag giveaway. Jamie made that beautiful sign on the left with her kids. Jamie, raise your hand. So the other thing that happened, and I'm pointing out these things that you kind of know about, because, just to remind you that we, I think even more than the Chatham's, have done our homework. Bridget led a team that went door-to-door to retailers to interview them about their plastic bag habits and to follow up on the resolution that you passed to ask before giving a bag. So there has been an initial survey on bags. We did this Plastic Free Week. We've done outreach with the teams to go green and, again, not just take their trash, use reusable bottles. This resulted in the most read editorial ever in the Madison Eagle. And we're currently working with the farmer's market, we're starting a reusable bag bin, and starting on Thursday, Joan is going to be at the farmer's market collecting extra reusable bags so that we can stock the bin. And if anybody has ideas on where other bins in town would be useful, this seems like a fertile way to get people to, who forgot their bags, to, yes.
You know that there is a lady at the Madison Farmer's Market who will take t-shirts and make bags from them?
Yeah.
She sews them right there on the street.
It's incredible, yeah. So this is all part, see, we're a movement, it's like in the air. So Joslyn Matheson of Chatham created an online survey, and I'm showing, the whole survey was in your packet, but I'm showing you the results of all three towns, because I think that splitting it into Chatham Township versus Chatham Borough is kind of not making any sense. There were 900 respondents, as you can see from the green bar, they're pretty concerned about the impact of plastic waste. They would like to see prohibiting single-use plastic bags. 70% would support, 10% not sure, 18% would not support. They're aware of the issue of plastic bags contaminating recycling. I would have to say that this is an issue that the Chatham's raised, and it's very, very significant in their budgeting, that they're having a lot more problem with it than I think we are currently. This is the regulatory environment. There is a bill being considered that would ban plastic bags, straws, and styrofoam, but again, it's in deep freeze. 66 municipalities have passed ordinances, 29 for bags, and I gave the mayor a list of, there's actually a lot longer list of who's considering it, who it's under consideration with, who it's pending, like, there's, but it's a pretty long spreadsheet. Sorry. So I gave you the recommendations. So at the Chatham Borough thing, the mayor was really concerned about, like, why don't we tackle straws now? The answer from our core group was, "One thing at a time. Let's just, let's do this and see what we can do with a regional approach subsequently." March 1st is the start date. Oh, and then this is just a commercial interlude. Our Echo House Tour is September 21st, Joan and Ellen are running it, and we, Madison is quite a cool place. We have three zero-energy houses, Joan owns one of them. I think you should line up to see her house, it's really great. We're planning this as not just like housing garden tour, but like, so-and-so has, is a really good composter, come ask her questions. Jamie, for instance, has an organic vegetable garden and keeps bees with her neighbor. We're trying to get ideas that are not just incredible showplaces, but will help people, like, find mentors for a greener lifestyle. Questions?
Thank you, Claire. And just a few comments to reinforce some of the things you said. Yeah, there was a great turnout at the community house, and a good number of mayors from, many including Livingston, I think we had representation from Berkeley Heights, and certainly strong support. And the importance, as you said, Marilyn came up with the same conclusion, that to do this on a regional basis is going to be very important. The initial adopters of the plastic bag ordinances were literally islands, because it started, I think, Jersey Shore Barrier Islands were the, kind of, the first adopters, because they felt that impact so much on their beaches. And now it's this regional approach, so I am, as I mentioned that night, and I think with the other mayors, committed to working together with a regional ordinance, which means, you know, we need to have it as closely fitting, you know, if there's any exceptions, it can't, we can't change the rules, because, as most, a lot of people in this room, their habit is, someday they might be at Stop &amp; Shop in Madison, and the next week they're going to be at Shop Right in Chatham Township, and so to have, or they might be going to Kings and Chatham, so to have different rules is not going to be helpful for our consumers and certainly not helpful for our businesses. So I think that will be a very important approach. I think it's also good to know that Stop &amp; Shop is already, you know, this is not going to be news to them. Connecticut has a statewide ban that's not going into effect for a while, but Stop &amp; Shop already is taking them out of their Connecticut stores, and so they will just be able to roll out their Connecticut model in here, and it's going to be in New Jersey eventually, especially if we have a groundswell of towns that have done the right thing by adopting this. Other comments or questions? Ostry?
What is the status of Chatham and Chatham Townships? Have they introduced an ordinance, or they are just in the talking stages also?
Um, we're trying to create that, we're trying to, together.
Okay.
But it's supposed to coincide with.
Yeah, I think the...
As Len Resto has said a couple of times, it doesn't matter when it gets introduced, it matters when it goes into effect. So if we all have the common start date of March 1st, if somebody takes somebody a little longer to get to the finish line, like, the other people presented in June, the other environmental commissions presented in the council in June.
And, you know, depending on when the three towns adopt, March 1st may or may not be a push, hard date to deadline to hit, but I think, now that we've, as you said, have done, the dog and pony has been done at the two Chatham's in Madison, I think we can, I can reach out to respective mayors and make sure we're, you know, thinking along the same lines as far as a date of introducing to, so that we're consistent with the ordinances and launching date.
Six months is a typical timeframe. It's not to say it couldn't be nine months, but it's not outrageous.
Maureen?
I have a house up in the Adirondacks. You do not have a choice of bags at all. You either bring your own bag, or you pack it back up into your cart and take it to your car and unload it there. And I've gotten used to it. I do it here in Madison now.
Certainly those survey results show that.
Yeah.
Other thoughts or questions? So it sounds, comfort was moving through, moving forward as on a regional basis, that I will also reach, I had conversations with Morris Township Mayor, they don't, none of their businesses are bordering this area, it's always interesting with a donut town, I think Morris Town is moving forward, and certainly reach out to Flora Park, but we'll see what we can do.
Also, if I didn't thank...
But I think if we have, my, right now, since the presentation is with the two Chatham's in Madison, that's, I think that's our core group, but if we can expand it, put more pressure...
Yeah, I think if we do this, we'll supply a bunch of peer pressure.
Yep.
For the other people to, like, then they dominoes.
Yep.
But Maureen sat in those meetings when we were arguing over this fee or that fee, so she's been in the trenches with us, and it's really been very helpful.
And I think it's a very straightforward ordinance, well laid out.
All right, thank you all.
Well, thank you very much, Claire. Thank you for working. For all the committee members and the audience, thank you for all the work. All right, ordinances for hearing, will the clerk please read the statement?
The ordinances scheduled for hearing were introduced by title and passed on the first reading at a regular meeting of the council held Monday, July 22, 2019, all were posted and filed according to law, and copies were made available to the general public. Oh, sorry.
Okay, call up ordinances for second reading, ask the clerk to read said ordinances by title.
Ordinance 39-2019, ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $240,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for additional 2019 milling and overlay projects.
I open the hearing for ordinance 2000, ordinance 39-2019. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance 39-2019.
Second, and thank you for doing Greenwood, thank you.
Any council discussion? Further council discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 39-2019 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance according to the law. Ordinance 40-2019.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $125,000 from the Electric Capital Improvement Fund for the purchase of an industrial rack storage system, electrical service, and LED lighting system and related materials.
I open the hearing for ordinance 40. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance 40-2019.
I'll second.
Any council discussion?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just going to point out that this is going to go into the new storage building that's being built for the electric department.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 40-2019 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance according to the law. Ordinance 41-2019.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $200,000 from the Water Utility Capital Fund Reserve for automated meter reading and $200,000 from the Electric Utility Capital Fund for the purchase of utility meters and accessories.
I open the hearing for ordinance 41. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance 41-2019.
I'll second.
Any council discussion? Roll call vote?
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Yes.
Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover? Yes.
Yes.
I declare ordinance 41-2019 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance according to the law. And now we're on to the second invitation for discussion, this is when you may comment on any topic, and the usual rules apply. When you come up, please state your name, your address, write the same on the clipboard, and try to keep your comments to three minutes, but I will give you a one-minute grace period and ask you to stop at four minutes. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, we close this part of the meeting, and we move on to introduction of ordinances, will the clerk please read the title?
Ordinance is scheduled for first reading, have a hearing date set for Monday, September 9th, 2019. All will be published in the Madison Eagle, posted on the bulletin board, and made available to members of the public requesting copies.
I call up ordinances for first reading, ask the borough clerk to read said ordinances by title. Ordinance 42-2019.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison amending Chapter 56 entitled Alcoholic Beverages to amend the hours for sale of alcohol beverages for on-premise consumption.
Mayor, I'll move ordinance 42-2019.
Second.
And council discussion? I brought this one forward to, and continued working on making sure our ordinances are in line with businesses as today. Mostly, this Chapter 56 dates the '70s and '80s, when we were dominated by taverns, and I would have been fully supportive of keeping a tavern closed until noon on a Sunday. Now we are a place of restaurants, and our businesses are put at a handicap position with having brunches that can't start until noon, so this allows them to start now at 10:00 a.m. Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Call up ordinance 43-2019.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $15,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for emergency replacement of Fire Engine 1 transmission.
Mayor, I move ordinance 43-2019.
I'll second.
Any council discussion? And this emergency, this engine is now out of operation, as it is literally stuck in first gear, so this is, we'll be taking care of it. Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Yes.
Consent agenda resolutions, will the clerk please read the statement?
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
Mayor, I move R 237-2019, R 239-2019 through R 252.
I'll second.
Any discussion or any that need to be pulled? Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Yes.
Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Yes.
There is no unfinished business? Approval of vouchers, will the clerk please read the voucher registry?
Current fund, $485,231.99. General Capital Fund, $297,428.26. Electric Operating Fund, $646,100.54. Electric Capital Fund, $4,464.32. Water Operating Fund, $11,297.04. Water Capital Fund, $602.97. And the Trust, $58,580.22. The total is $1,503,705.34.
Mayor, I move approval of the vouchers.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote?
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen? Yes.
Under new business, I'd like to make the following appointments, requesting council confirmation for Sustainable Madison Advisory Committee, Angelique Devost, for Howell Street for unexpired three-year term through December 31st, 2021, and Patriotic Celebrations Committee, Wayne Henderson, 39 Canterbury Road for one-year term through December 31st, 2021. Wayne Henderson, 39 Canterbury Road for one-year term through December 31, 2019.
Mayor, I move the, the appointments for council confirmation.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mayor, I move that we adjourn the meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Well done. Thank you all.
That was efficient. Ben would be proud of us. 9:15, yeah, that's right. I can go to bed. So I can go to bed.